Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 25th, 2019 School Committee meeting. In keeping with the school committee's vote, we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance before discussing the topics as listed on the agenda. Anyone in attendance who does not wish to participate in reciting the pledge should feel free to refrain from doing so. Participation in saying the pledge will always be voluntary.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any folks in the audience who wish to make a citizen's comment? Seeing none, we will move on. School committee chair updates. Okay, just a reminder for everybody to please check your NRSD.net email once a day at least. I mean, I'm checking it all day, but that's me. But please check because things come in fast and sometimes we need you to get back what's about being. So just a reminder there. There will be no school committee meeting on November 6th. Most of us will be at the MAS-C, MAS-S conference. And right now, we're not scheduling a makeup. Looking at the calendar, November in and of itself looks pretty busy. So, but as we get into budget season, if we need to schedule an extra meeting, we will do so by consensus. Let me see what else. Oh, on December 4th, starting at 4:30, we will have a school committee legal issues workshop with our attorney, Mike Macaro. Joseph and Mary, you were going to be meeting to discuss the school committee meeting room? Have you met already?
We have not.
Okay, good. Because if you could invite me to your first meeting, that would be great.
Oh, wonderful. That'd be great.
I'd love to.
I'll be refreshing. Okay. And just a reminder, agendas for subcommittee meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance. Please keep your minutes up to date. Once approved, send them to Alita and she will post them. And I gave out a minutes template at the workshop in June. If you want another copy of that, I'm happy to send it to you. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Quick question. The template is great.
Yes.
Do you have it that you can send us electronically?
Absolutely.
Because that would make, then we could just...
Oh, sure. No, I thought I had, but I will, Mary.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our student representative, Ibi, has a volleyball game tonight.
She does, yeah.
Which sounds a lot more fun than being at school committee, so good for her. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thanks. Before we start, I'm going to ask Joel to come forward here. And we have somebody new that we want to present to our school committee tonight, so... Oh, we have no internet. Oh my goodness. We may not have any more information up here. We'll have to wait and see. So Joel, our apologies for that.
No.
Oh, she got it. She got it back.
No.
No. So Joel, we'd like you to just take a minute here and introduce us to somebody special who's just joined our team.
Indeed, yes. Thank you for having us. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our new assistant principal, Mr. Mark Levine. Mr. Levine has had a variety of roles in public education. He has done it all, and we are thrilled that he is now doing it with us at Florida Source.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
So I think, I just want to say welcome, Mark. Again, I know that we've already said that to you several times here, and tonight we say this in public, welcome. We're just thrilled to have you as a team member. We appreciate what you bring to us. I know that you've got some interesting background in terms of you have chef skills that you've got.
Yeah.
So maybe talk to us a little bit about your background and where you came from, maybe the school districts that you've been in, just some general background information.
Yeah, that's true. I was the kid in school who didn't want to be there. I wanted to cook. I've cooked since I was about six or seven. Family story. I got for eighth grade, when I was eight years old, for Christmas, I got an Easy Bake Oven. My sister played baseball batting club. We were changing things around. About when I was in my twenties, I started working, working my way up to as a chef. And I was working at a business that was doing really well, but was getting bored. And so I made a deal with the owner that I could go back to school full-time and still do my 60 hours a week. And so, yeah, I was working out. I would drive to Boston, to UMass Boston, Monday through Thursday nights, go to school, work the rest of the time, and had a daughter at the same time, but got my degree in English and found out that pre-aid reform, if I took two classes and student taught, I couldn't teach. And I said, oh, okay. Fast forward a few years, I was working 90 hours a week, nine in the morning till midnight, six days a week. Didn't see my wife or my daughter, and my wife said, why don't you see if there's any teaching jobs? And like the smart husband I am, I listened to her and found a place in Central Mass, a private school, that was looking for a half-time English teacher, half-time culinary arts teacher.
Wow.
And so I listened to the universe and teaching since. I was cooking for a few years because I took a cut in pay. I started off at Eagle Hill School, which was a private school for kids with learning disabilities and behavioral issues. From there, I went to Leominster. Taught in Leominster for four years and loved Leominster, had a lot of fun there. But my hometown and where I lived, Littleton, was looking for a middle school teacher for English. And I applied and started working there and worked there for 13 years. I was the department chair, the team leader, the union president. I did just, I was an alumni, a parent, so I did just about everything there. Then I left Littleton to follow my wife to Baltimore. She got a job at Johns Hopkins University. And so I went down there with her after selling our house and took a job at a charter school down there. And I was their fourth English teacher, and it was October. And so, and the kids were like, itching to get a fifth one.
Yeah.
But they didn't, and I stuck it out there. But I missed home and missed my family, and my wife's parents and my parents were getting on, so I came back here and worked as an assistant principal. I need them. And I liked that, but it wasn't fulfilling me the way I wanted to, so I left there and for two years taught for the Department of Youth Services in Worcester, teaching literally at a school in a prison for kids, working with some of the most troubled students that we have in Commonwealth, and loved every minute of it. But the way things are right now with DYS, they're cutting programs, and so I decided to look and get back into administration. And I was fortunate enough to land this position and love every minute of it. And you know, the days fly by and the kids are fantastic. I was told early on, if you're having a difficult day, go to the kindergarten. And I tell you, it makes my day when, you know, I see these kids now and they come up to me, hi, Mr. Levine. And the nurse tried to correct them, and I was like, no, 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 it's going to be fine. It's just, it's a really, you know, wonderful place. Everyone, when people ask me, you know, what it's like there, I say, it's kind of weird. Everybody smiles all the time. You know, the kids, they say thank you when they're leaving a class, they stop in the hallway to say hello and, you know, ask my name. They work me into the classroom lessons that I'm involved with today, they worked me into the Spanish lesson. It was, it's a really fun place to work and to be. I feel blessed.
Thank you, Mark. And you know, it's interesting, because I had said to you, Mark came in and spent some time with me, maybe two weeks ago or whatever, it was just after school started. And I asked him at the very end, I said, what do you notice the most? And this is exactly what he said, everybody's always smiling. He says, everybody's always happy. And it's like, yep, that's who we are. So anyway, we love having you. I'm so glad that you came tonight. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Our school committee could meet you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joel, as always, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks again, Mark. So from there, I'll go into my superintendent's report, and Todd and I will share off a couple of different things. Facilities, I'm going to do a bit of a facilities update because we've got so much stuff going on with facilities and a number of different areas. So if you've got questions, feel free to ask me. The Leach Field is up first. The Leach Field, for all intents and purposes, is now finished. It's all done. It's up, it's fully functional now. We had a little glitch yesterday, and it was like, oh, you know, we all took that deep in, and oh my gosh, please don't let anything go wrong. But it was a little mechanical error and it was fine right after that. So it's going very, very well, so we're very happy with that. It was a great project. Came in exactly the dollars that we thought it was going to come in at. It was a very smooth project. Mass DEP gave its final approval on the 19th, so we're good with Mass DEP. And you remember that we were on the naughty list because of that, or whatever list is that we shouldn't have been on. So we're off that list right now, so we're thrilled. The oil tank, the preparations are being wrapped up right now in anticipation of the new oil tank coming on stream here. We don't have a confirmed date for its arrival, but they're doing all the electrical, all the mechanical right now. So basically, when it comes in, it'll just go right into place. If it doesn't come in in a timely manner, then we've got preparations made to bring in temporary oil tanks so that we can keep the high school warm throughout. If the timing, the timing is, this is Rob's notes to report out tonight, the timing works closely. The tank is being made and would be ready for the second or third week of October. Once the concrete is for the contract, can start then pressuring them to get the actual date. So probably by next time we're together, I should have a very specific timeline on that, too. The next thing is with regards to construction at the corner of Wataquatic and 117. We were initially told that to expect the constructions to start on this last Monday. It didn't happen at the same level that we thought, but I was speaking with Don Lo today, and I know that Rob Frieser has been in touch with Joe Lynch. Again, the town has been outstanding to work with. They're looking at, starting to really amp up tomorrow, so we'll be monitoring the buses for the next, because this will affect the entire district. It's not just like Bolton, it's going to affect all of that travel on 117 for us, right? So your special education vans, your, just all the travel that we do, all the food runs that we're doing now because Stowe doesn't have water, because we're cooking offsite and bringing it, all of that stuff is ongoing. So there's a lot for us to consider, our grounds crews that travel, all of our sports teams, the middle school, you know, murals, all of that kind of thing. So there's a lot for us to consider. So right now, I think we just need to be really, really patient. This is going to be, at the end, this is going to be a really good thing for Bolton, like really. I mean, we just have to always look at the end product, right? And we're going to have the extra turning lanes in there, and the traffic will flow easier, so we just need to get through the next couple of months with this. But we're up to the challenge.
So is what they're doing widening the road?
Yeah, they're going to, like, you'll see them probably tomorrow starting to hammer out all the curbs, and they're going to kind of rip out all of that and kind of widen it so that there's a turning lane, like from here going west, turning lane onto Wataquatic. And I think that there's going to be an absolute turning lane dedicated, turning lane from Wataquatic onto 117. So it's kind of a major thing in the whole intersection area there.
Are they going to put a traffic light? Are they going to keep...
That's, I think that that's phase two. There's a phase one, and then there's a phase two in the early spring. And I think that they're looking at some type of traffic light going in at that point in time.
So is there any kind of an accommodation made for school buses in terms of, maybe they take their coffee break during the time when...
We tried that. I mean, we can giggle because you're saying that, but part of me is giggling because I think, yeah, that's exactly what we have wanted to. So for example, we had said, you know, what time do you really have to start? But again, and we have to keep this in mind, too, because we work with unions, and no offense to unions, but because we work with unions, we understand the union time starts at a certain time, ends at a certain time, breaks are a certain time, not exactly like our union. But I mean, we understand and respect that. So the bottom line is, you know, we said, well, when will they start work? Well, they're scheduled to start at seven. And we said, well, might they have a meeting, maybe from seven to 7:15? Well, they might. Oh, okay, well, that would be really good, because then, at least if they start at 7:15, like after the meeting, then our high school is settled, right? And so that's, so at least one big building of a thousand kids and, you know, a hundred and some staff is all settled. And then that just leaves the three communities, the middle and elementary schools. So I think, you know, we've talked about it as an administrative team here. I think we're just, we're all kind of monitoring it, and, you know, generally, our principals are calling us in the morning saying, okay, so far, yeah, we're not seeing any change. You know, next week, I expect that we're going to see some major changes. So we decided the other day as a team that we'll sit and watch what happens over the course of the next couple of days, and then we'll do a regroup and decide what this is going to look like. I mean, we've done all kinds of different things, to your point, but in terms of being innovative, how many minutes of instruction have we got in each building? Can we afford to change the times? Can we not? Do we change the bus times? Do we not? Do we change routes? Do we, you know, so we're looking at just about anything and everything here. And I would give a full kudos to our bus company, too, for working so closely with us on this. So we're just going to be flexible in the next week and see what happens, and then we'll make some decisions probably later next week.
Leah.
So should the kids anticipate the buses going in a different direction? I know that my child was told that the buses were likely going to take different roads. Is that something that...
Not sure who told them that.
It was a bus driver. So I just wonder if they, if that's not going to happen, you know, so be it. But should the kids be alerted that, you know, if you see the bus going in a different direction, taking a different road, not to worry?
Well, first of all, that's the first I've heard of that at all from anyone, so I'm not sure where that would have come from at all, other than maybe a bus driver saying, well, I don't know, maybe they'll change the roads or something like that. I can see that kind of conversation happening. But that, that specific conversation has not happened at the, with the lead bus transportation executive director at any of our offices.
So you think they'll, at this point in time, they're going to try to stay on the same courses?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And then is there a way for parents, I don't want you guys to be inundated, or the bus company be inundated with worried parents if buses are delayed? Like, how are parents going to be alerted if buses are running behind, or...
Well, we don't even know yet, because we don't even know if they're going to be. And all, and again, I give all kudos to our town of Bolton, because they're going to have these detail out there for the whole time. And their thing to us right now is we're going to try to keep you as close to on schedule as we can possibly keep you. So when we sent out that memo last week, it was just to kind of say, okay, just heads up, this may happen, it might not, but we're thinking it probably will. And I think, you know, we may find, for example, that maybe, maybe one or two buses will be affected where others won't, you know? And just like I'm saying, we don't think the high school will be affected. You know, I'm not as worried about the high school students leaving the high school, but I don't know if they're going to get home at the same point in time, and I don't know how the delays are going to look there for the second run. It's the second runs I'm worried about, right? It's not the first runs that they're doing, because they're picking up at the right times for the first runs. It's the second run when they go to deliver or pick up with the second run. So, and we won't know that until we see it actually play itself out. So, I mean, we, we literally bought about 3,000 children, right? So, and for us in these couple of weeks, or the next couple of days, to say, okay, this person, I, I'm not sure what that could even begin to look like, which is why we basically sent out the message, just be flexible here, watching what's happening here, because there's no way we could let 3,000 kids know exactly where they were going to be.
Other questions about, they anticipate two months?
There was no cutoff time. There was no final time.
They didn't have an estimate?
They have no estimate. No, basically, it's, we're going to work until we can't work anymore. And then, you know, so honestly, they're thinking around mid-December, and then as soon as the snow is gone, then they'll start up again. So that's really how they've left it with us. And again, I think the end product is worth it. We're okay with this, so we just have to all be flexible here, all of us, because it's a lot of parents and it's a lot of children that we move, and that's not even the staff that we're moving about in the district, you know, on a regular basis. So for us, this is a huge deal right now, so just hang tight with us here. So, any other questions? No? Okay. No, I'm still not finished.
No, 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 I think, now you make one.
I still, I still have one left here. This is with regards to the water, and Stowe Water, and to kind of give you an update here. I've actually got notes right from Rob that I'm going to kind of read to you. The key to take away, this is from my notes, but then I'm going to read Rob's notes. So we've got finalized engineering plans in the Mass DEP right now that we're hoping that they will approve. We think that they probably will, because they've been part of us, working with us and part of the finding the fix all the way along, so we're not thinking we'll have an issue there. We might have some tweaks, but shouldn't be a major issue on that. I'll just mention here what he's got. He says, we're working with Neo Geo Science on engineering for full building filtration to remove the pet house contaminants. You'll recall that I said that at one point in time, we thought that, while it still holds true, that what we have to do for one school is going to be marginally different than the other school, right? And I think that Hale will probably be the easier school for the fix as such, and it's just because of how the plumbing is at Center School. That's all it is. It's nothing other than that. But what they are looking at doing is fixing both, so that both are up full, full scale again. So at first, we thought we might have to do it piecemeal, but it doesn't look like that. That's how it's going to play out. Again, I'll be reading right from Rob's notes. We will be installing four filtration vessels that are filled with granular activated carbon. The vessels will be sized based off of the flow of the water that the schools use each day. The first vessel will do the bulk of the work, and the other three vessels will clean up any of the contaminants that got by the first one. The system is designed to get ratings to a non-detect on the finished water that is distributed in the building, so that's what we're aiming for. I don't know whether we'll get there, but that's what we're aiming for is a non-detect. At Hale, we'll have to make some modifications to the outer building where the well and water storage tank and the chemical feed to make it appropriate, because right now it isn't. So we're going to have some work to do in that area as well. Center School will require a little bit more engineering due to, exactly as I said, to the chemical feed and the water softening system. The NE Geo Science submitted the application for the approval of the engineering to Mass DEP last week, so we'll know shortly where we're at with that. Rob has also been staying in contact with the Stowe leadership, so that they know what's going on as well. We have no idea of cost right now, so I'm just putting that out there right now. We have no idea what this is going to cost. So as soon as we know, we'll let them know. Next item is mosquitoes. Let's talk mosquitoes for a minute. The tree lines of all NRSD buildings now have been treated for the second and final installment in an effort to curb the mosquito population on our campuses. The regional aerial spraying, which we had nothing to do with, has also been completed, as well as our own vendor that came in to do it. We anticipate that with the nice weather, we'll probably be continuing to reschedule our athletic activities through the month of October. We thought it might only be September, but now it's looking like it's going to go into October as well. So for those parents who are heavily involved in our sports seasons, know that you can expect to see some changes for rescheduling again next month. So that's just a general facilities update. Any questions on that? No? Okay, great. The next item is the building of, the potential building project with the high school. Discussion is expected to begin this fall and move forward into the new school year, linked to the current SOI, the Statement of Interest that we have with MSBA. This is being proactive. I will talk a lot more about this here, probably at the next meeting, and then again, at the November meeting. And so this is kind of draw, almost a teaser, if you will, to say, this is coming, so just to let you know. We're taking a look at starting early discussions about what the needs probably would be from the, primarily from the staff perspective, of a new or substantially changed high school. And so we've got somebody who will be coming in, and we've had our first meeting to start to align things. We'll be having a follow-up meeting next week to start to strategize and see what those additional meetings will look like and how this is going to play itself out. Very exciting, little daunting, but very, very exciting. And we're doing this to be proactive. MSBA is not forcing us to do this. We are doing this of our own volition right now. But one of the things that struck me this summer was, and I'll speak to that again next month, is sitting in an MSBA session where a school, two schools that had just come out of there, finishing their projects, said, we felt that it was so rushed that we didn't have the time to really think about it once we got queued up. And so I thought, we're not queued up yet, maybe we take some time right now to seriously be thoughtful, planful, strategize. What should that look like for the next decade? And so we've got some really good ideas, and I really appreciated our first kickoff meeting the other day. I thought it went very, very well. So you'll hear more about that here in the next couple of meetings. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Monroy.
Okay. Moving on, so touching base on social emotional learning, on Monday, the 23rd of September, our teams from each of our elementary and our middle schools convene with the Student Systemic Support Academy, or also known as S3 Academy, the large grant that we received last year, and continue to participate in now in the beginning year two of our work with the implementation of support plans at each of our schools in collaboration with Boston College, as well as the Ready Center. Members from each of our schools worked on developing implementation plans at each school. They also worked with the newly developed standards in conjunction with each plan. These standards allow each team to make sure they are addressing the major needs of social emotional learning in their schools, and to also begin assessing our progress there. The work continues to evolve. Moving forward, the district this year will be working with an individual consultant who is there on Monday, who will visit the district and work with us on each of the social emotional learning plans that are in place.
And I think we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that you and Mr. Grady presented the other day.
We did. Kyle gets us extra participation points at these conferences, because he often, he often volunteers us to participate. So we were the model yet again. So we were able to get up and actually use some of the programming that we have been developing and use it against the standards that they have been using with a room full of about, I don't know, 500 to 600 people in the room. So that was great.
Thanks for doing that, Mr. Grady.
We got some great feedback. And the nice thing is that they have now developed these standards by which we can measure our implementation plans against, and they have also developed rubrics by which we can then assess our work. So as we talk about data and providing data points for this work, they are aware that, you know, social emotional learning can be a little bit more qualitative and are working very hard to help develop assessment tools for us that we can bring forward to districts so that we know where we are at in the process. So that was a great advancement that we have here in the second year with this program. So more on that as it continues to evolve. Last Wednesday, on the 18th, the district began its professional development work for the year at each school. As it was a site-based day, as we will have two site-based days, September and October, each school had a strong focus in addressing the year's goals in conjunction with our district and our school improvement plans. From unpacking MCAS data to building positive climate within school cultures to an essential support training for our nursing and our guidance staff, the district was well-engaged. As part of our outreach and desire for authentic feedback, too, all district members completed an exit survey in providing us with feedback, not only on the programming at each site, but recognizing that Wednesday was the first Wednesday early release, so we really did some outreach to everybody in terms of how that Wednesday went for people. And we did a deep dive on why it went well, why maybe it didn't go so well, so we'll be able to continually bring you that feedback as that change happened this year. The feedback will be shared with each building principal, as well as it was a site-based day, and unpacked at our district-wide teaching and learning meetings as they occur each month in our teaching and learning offices. And finally, accountability consent data is out. Our accountability information has been released, and our MCAS data has been released. The school and district accountability data is now out there. We will be providing specific outcomes and sharing this data with the district in the near future as soon as we comb through it and get a sense of where we are at. Each school is doing that with MCAS data, as well as their own accountability data, as well as the district as a whole. The initial findings show that the district and each school do not require any intervention or assistance this year, based on last year's performance. And I will say, in addition, one school in the district has been cited as a school of recognition in all three categories, including high achievement, meeting and exceeding targets, and high growth. This is a tremendous accomplishment within the state, and there will be more to come on that accountability and MCAS outcomes at a later meeting.
So the school that is being recognized?
Well...
You can't say that embargoed?
It's not embargoed.
Except it was in the patch.[1668.24] Except it was in the patch.
It is not. It wasn't the part. It is the Luther, it is the Luther Burbank Middle School. Our principal, our friend, is here tonight. We will report more out on it at a later meeting when we go through all of it. But the data was good and that is a huge accomplishment for the district as well as for school, so.
Leah, can I just ask a clarifying question on MCAS data? Are they at this point showing assessing growth? Is this the second year of 2.0 or?
Yeah, this is the second year of it.
Do they still do the growth percentile scores?
Yes.
They are still doing it?
They are still doing it.
Okay.
And we will, we will have an entire presentation on all of that, a very thorough one for you. But my, for my report tonight is just to say, it has been released. It's now officially released to the public. And it's something we're, you know, we're putting together and we'll have a.
We generally do it in October, November. We come out forward and we give a full-scale presentation on it, so.
And that's about when parents get reports, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. So, all is well in the world of teaching and learning.
And lots of progress. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. New business, middle school Washington DC trip approval. So, are you gonna?
Yeah, let me tee it up first of all. You'll recall that last year was the first year that we started to bring all of our trips forward to have a school committee approval that they were overnight. You recall that it was in policy, but we hadn't really been doing it. So, we started last year to do it about mid-year. And so, one of the things that we thought about was those trips such as this one where everybody does it. It makes us just do it one night, bring all the principals forward. They can all talk. It's the exact same trip, quite frankly. Different days, different schools, but really it's pretty much the exact same trip. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to the principals and maybe just give a brief overview from your perspective and we can discuss it after.
Go ahead, Joel.
I'm gonna start. So, as Superintendent Clutchy said, that the experiences are essentially the same kinds of things. We'll go and see the monuments and the museums and take in, you know, those living, breathing aspects of what the eighth graders are learning about throughout the year in terms of civics and the federal government and the historical monuments. It's a great experience for the students. Our trips are all this similar in length as well. Four-day trips and buses. And I think you have copies of our requests in front of you as well.
This is an annual trip. They take this every year. So, this is just coming forward. And we thought we would do this now. So, I mean, the trips are, you know, much later in the year, of course. But we thought it would make sense to just kinda get it over with now and have the approval.
So, we can start the fundraising aspects of it as well.
Yeah, I don't have a.
I deserve a question when it's time.
Oh, sure. Ask a question.
Okay. So, one thing I noticed is that each school is using a different company. And so, I wondered, well, maybe why, but also afterwards, if you've used the same company year over year, do you principals get together and say and talk about, you know, the different agencies or companies that you're using?
Yeah. So.
Compare, contrast, you know?
Yeah. No, so, as you know, Florence Sawyer School didn't go for a number of years. It wasn't a trip that we had sort of taken off the table. And when we decided to take the trip up again, because our seventh graders go away to Sargent Center. So, building in the Washington DC trip, we all had the same tour company at that time, I think. And then we just looked at the options that weren't available, at least as far as our school went. And so, the eighth grade class advisors work with the principals in terms of the aspects of the trip. We've calibrated before in terms of the dates and included the athletic director in that. And it really doesn't make that much of a difference in terms of scheduling for when we end up going.
I think we both use suburban?
Yeah, we both use suburbia tours.
I think the trips are all very similar. They're all very similar in scope. It's a really great culminating trip for the eighth graders. They look forward to it. It's their one last. And it's a significant coming together of the class before they hit to the high school. It's really special. Mike?
So, this is more of a policy question, not about the field trip. I think the field trip is obviously a great experience. But I noticed that on all three approval forms that there was one or more to-be-determined chaperones. And I wonder what that means assuming that, let's just say, for instance, that we approve this. What does that mean for those outstanding chaperones?
In our case, with the numbers where they are right now, we don't need more than seven. And I would anticipate that the numbers would go down. So, the to-be-determined would be a placeholder if we were to need an eighth chaperone, which I would obviously bring before you again. If there was any change to it.
Okay.
Good. And you have one question?
Well, no, no, but so, for instance, there, I think there's, sorry. Which one is, which one is yours? There's, so there's three here.
Uh, it's Florence Sawyer School. It's FSS Grade Eight.
Oh, there it is. Okay, Kayla Kopp. Okay, so then the other two have multiple to-be-determines. So, I guess my policy question is, if we approve it, then that sort of leaves the door open. Not that I would assume that anything would happen like that, but in terms of policy, it does leave the door open for chaperones that are either not coriied or fingerprinted or.
No. No, they are not. I don't know if you recall last year that there was a lot of discussion about adhering to policy with regards to coriing and fingerprinting and knowing who was going before. And I can't remember which field trip was impacted, but we came very close to not having it.
Right, right.
To the point where the committee came in.
Right, I remember.
Just to approve it. So, I think we really hold to the policies.
So, does that mean that these folks have been coming back once the?
I think Todd's gonna speak to that.
Given the work we did around field trips last year and really streamlining that process and making sure that every chaperone was coriied and fingerprinted and the 90-day out that we have to get this before school committee, we wanted to get these trips in front of you very, very early. But also knowing there are some adults who either have not committed to being a chaperone yet. So, the expectation is that they will come before again to say with, with, these are the chaperones that will be on. But because it is September and these trips won't go until the spring. But we wanna get them all out to you ahead of time and have them streamlined. You will see on the October 23rd meeting as well, the high school's gonna come forward with several global trips so that they are in front of you well in advance of 90 days. And there are just sometimes those glitches, but they will be coriied and fingerprinted and they will be brought to you beforehand. We just wanna streamline it this year.
Yeah, if you, if you take a look, for example, I mean, you know, the Luther Burbank is May and this is September, you know?
Right.
It's really just, I think it was more about procedural for us, just to make sure that these are getting the approval now so that they can, Joel, so they can go back, do the appropriate fundraising, do whatever they need to do.
Oh, yes.
If you want to add something for, just for procedural, you can put in a motion with the understanding all chaperones will be coriied and fingerprinted.
Thank you. Any other questions? I had a question just relative to chaperones. Hale says you have 105 students approximately going and 15 chaperones. Luther Burbank has 90 and needs nine chaperones and Florence Sawyer has 71 students and seven chaperones. Why does Hale need so many?
That's just going by the numbers that we've, of parents who have agreed to go in the past. So, we've had a little bit more than 10, 10 students per one chaperone. Last year, I think we ended up for a class of 78. We ended up sending 12 total chaperones. And that's just because there were more parents who wanted to go. And knowing that the constellation of the students going on the trip, it was worthwhile having some extra hands.
Okay. No, no, that's, that's good to know. The other thing is the cost. And I know that you're using different companies. Burbank is $1,000. Florence Sawyer is not to exceed 900 and Hale is 800. What is, do they get different things or?
So, when we say not to exceed, it's, we say to our parents, "It won't be more than this."
Oh, no, no, I know what that means, but I'm just wondering why it'd be a different.
Depending on how much fundraising that we are able to do.
Yeah, but what, what accounts for the?
But that's what he's saying. It just, it really just depends on how much fundraising is and how much you've been able to, that, that's all it is.
Right, but the other two listed an amount. It doesn't say not to exceed, so like, yeah.
I mean, I know there are some differences in the itineraries. So, I know that that does impact the cost. I also know the location of the hotel.
Yeah.
Does impact the cost and the size of the class impacts the cost of the trip for each individual student as well.
It tends to be the larger the class, the less overall, the less overall cost that for the trip it is.
The closer you stay to Washington.
The other thing, the way it works is, as parents, parents have to pay a certain amount to attend the trip, so that also helps reduce the cost. So, that's another factor in there, which is why we might have more chaperones going, which then could end up having a different cost. I would certainly say that fundraising is a huge component of it. But there are some, there are some differences with, within the trip. You know, Mr. Keveney really organizes the trip for us. He does all of it. So, we're really just getting a company to get us tickets into certain locations that he chooses. They're also getting us the busing and the lodging. And in Mr. Keveney's particular, about what lodging we get so that we can get into certain areas at certain times of day. So, that, all of that has a little bit.
He did that before I got into teaching. Were you aware of that?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you two ought to talk to Kevin Keveney. He's got your deal. No, it's just, it's good to know. And then all the schools do fundraising to offset the cost?
The other thing I'd like to say is, as much as the, these trips, you know, are sort of a bookend for students and a time to come together, there's, you know, there's clearly an academic component, but it's also just fun.
Sure.
And it's just remembering that it's a fun trip for them to go on. It's a memory-making time. We try to tie it to academics throughout the school, but there's an acknowledgement too that it's just a good time for them.
Right. No. Any other questions?
I would add.
Yes.
That my son went last year and loved it. So, I can attest to that. It was very important to his development, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. This is one about curiosity.
Sure.
Does the time period in which the students or the schools go, does that impact the cost as far as hotel and accommodations are concerned? Probably. Okay, I just was curious. Because, okay, someone, William, I'm going in mid-April and I thought, well, that could be a time when there's a lot of students and a lot of families heading down there. And of course, hotels are gonna spike their prices at that point. But that is something that might be something that affects the cost, what I mean.
Yeah, and there's also certain, you know, there's some strategy too. Sometimes you wanna make sure that you're going when congressmen are in office. There's been times where I've gone in the past where they're at recess.
Yeah.
So, you don't end up really seeing many live things. So, it's important that you kinda have to look at a lot of different factors. And then also, in the past, we've run into it being more expensive because there's not many hotels available in March Park because of conferences, other conferences that are happening.
Yeah.
So, it's a bit of a moving target.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do we wanna put some motions?
Yes, it's from Florence Sawyer. So, I moved to approve the Florence Sawyer Grade Eight class trip to Washington DC on March 31st, 2020 through April 3rd, 2020 for approximately 71 students and eight chaperones with the understanding that all chaperones will be coriied and fingerprinted.
Second? Any seconds? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, Florence Sawyer gets to go.
Thank you. All right.
My work here is done.
I moved to approve the Hale Middle School Grade Eight class trip to Washington DC on April 14th, 2020 through April 17th, 2020 for approximately 105 students and 15 chaperones with the understanding that all chaperones will be coriied and fingerprinted.
Second? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Luther Burbank?
All right. I moved to approve the Luther Burbank Middle School Grade Eight class trip to Washington DC on May 26th, 2020 through May 29th, 2020 for approximately 90 students and nine chaperones with the understanding that chaperones will be coriied and fingerprinted.
Second?
Second.
Leah? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I know it's fun and it's well-organized, but it's still taking eighth graders, a lot of them out of state on a bus. Thank you. God bless.
You're welcome to join us.
If you fill a TBE slot just right there at this table.
When I was in Concord, I went. And I didn't, I was in central office, so the kids didn't know me as a teacher or principal or anything. So, they gave me my group and of course, they were eighth-grade boys, my favorite people. And so, I'm giving them, I want them to know that I'm not a pushover. I may be old, but I'm tough, you guys. And I said, "I was a middle school teacher and a middle school principal, a high school principal, and what do you take away from that?" And one of them said, "That you can't keep a job." So, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you so much, principals, for coming. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so next we have the whole business district improvement plan and.
I'll start. I'll tee it up.
You go.
And we're asking a principal friend back to the table and Martina Kenyon to join us this evening. So, I'm just gonna do a quick tee-up before I turn it over to Dr. McGuire. So, this is just basically, again, contextually to remind you that when we first came into, this administration came into the district, we really took a fresh look at the district improvement plan. And we wanted to gear it to something that was truly genuine and authentic for the work that the district really was doing. It forced us, and I say that with affection, it forced us to look ahead, really plan, really set priorities, and then really set a pathway to go after those priorities. So, I feel really, really good about where we've landed. And now, three years later, you know, I'm looking at this plan and I'm just, I'm so proud of the work that's been done. I know that, similar to you with the S3 Academy the other day when you were presenting, because, and it became like an exemplar in the room, this also has become an exemplar across the state. Our, our process and the actual template that we use and how we, how we come to find our way through this. This is a lot of work. We involve a lot of people. And I know that Martina, Laura, and Todd will speak about that because for all intents and purposes, even though our school committee has seen this before, our community hasn't. So, this is really our night to say to the community, this is the direction that the school district will be taking this year. I also wanna commend our school committee too because we spent a lot of time on this. We really did. I mean, we had an extra session just to talk about the district improvement plan. And again, for the community, this is something that, that all school districts do every year. So, it's not something that's just specific to Nishoba, but all school districts across the state are expected to do this. And it really is just for us, for this particular district. We see ourselves as a really strong district, a really, really solid, good, high-functioning district. So, when we take a look at a district improvement plan, we might look at it through a different lens than another district might. We're looking to, for the gold. We're looking for that excellence. And so, we, we shoot a little higher, I think, when we talk about our district improvement plans and processes that we've got in place. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over. I'm really excited about where we're at. I'm excited about the work that we've got in front of us and how we're looking to accomplish this. We've also laid this out for our teachers our very first day back. Again, Martina presented then and the principals have talked about it in their meetings since we've been back. So, I think everybody across the district right now kind of knows where we're at. So, this is really more about the community tonight. So, Dr. McGuire, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So, just in presenting the district improvement plan related to the greater community, I'm just gonna quickly go over what the vision and the mission is for the district as well as you folks also asked for me to include and add kind of the developmental process to this document. You will find that in this document. And another thing that you asked for was a specific definition in how we as a district are defining social emotional learning. So, we've done that. And Martina and Laura can speak to that from their work in the trenches at each of the schools and with, obviously specifically with Martina as a curriculum director and how, and how we organize all of that. So, the vision of the Nishoba Regional School District is to engage educators and students as well as their families and all of our community members to foster and sustain educational services that really support and enrich and extend the curriculum for all of our students. Use indicators of student growth that show achievement and potential for instructional planning. They maintain and improve the necessary space, materials, and technology necessary for a quality education and communicate and demonstrate progress towards our goals. I think you'll find that each of the four of our goals speaks specifically to that vision, whether it's learning environments, whether it's supporting each learner, curriculum, as well as literacy across all disciplines. And the mission statement of our district is to educate all students to their fullest potential in a safe, caring environment to become critical, creative, reflective thinkers and positive contributors to the global community. Monday at our S3 Academy, that really was our anchoring statement in which we have really grown our plans, our LCL plans at each of our schools from that mission statement.
Now, Todd, I just wanted to ask a quick question here. I know that you've got this slide on your computer right now. But this is actually right on the first sheet, correct?
This is the front sheet that I write, the vision and the mission.
Yeah, so that's what he's reading from is your very front, your very first sheet right there. Yeah, thank you.
And those core values that we really plan these goals around in terms of valuing excellence through achievement and growth for all of our learners, active environments in which their diverse backgrounds, identities, and strengths are respected. Digital learning, communication, and collaboration has been new to the district in the last few years. Family and community engagement has been a priority and continues to be. Our work with safety and healthy environments, particularly if you remember last year's district improvement plan, safety and health was a major, major goal. And the shared responsibility for all of our learners, both student and adult. And so, those are the core values associated with the district. If you look on the second page of this, we worked to just create the process by which the district improvement plan is developed. And we went over this in our meeting over the summer and for your request, asked us to include it in the district improvement plan, which I think we believe is a great idea so that all community members know how we go about. so that all community members know how we go about the process. So, uh, we review the district vision annually, um, as a teaching and learning department, as an administration and as a district. Uh, we examine those core values to ensure that the, in, school improvement plans coincide with the district's vision in the improvement plan. Um, and specifically, as I mentioned, you know, on the previous slide, when we talk about things like digital learning and we talk about things like communication and community involvement, those have been evolving for us over the last few years. So in our development, we really take a look at those things and how we can continue to grow with them. Uh, and then we have a creation of a district team that includes multiple stakeholders from all of our schools. We had principals, we had assistant principals, we had multiple members from Central Office. We had members from the teaching and learning team, um, join us, um, in terms of building this plan from the ground up. And so the process was, um, identifying our needs and our priorities. We identify commonalities across all of those constituencies and all of those stakeholders so that we can identify what we have in common to move forward with. We then develop those outcomes, uh, and we create overarching goals that address district needs, but also will address school needs as well. Specific actions and benchmarks for each goal are created to ensure measurable growth, and the plan is developed by the team and then presented to the school committee for their feedback and ultimately their approval.
I think the other thing, uh, I just want to, um, insert here too, is that I feel like we're finally at the stage now. Um, we certainly weren't at the beginning, but we are now where the district improvement plan really helps to inform the school improvement plans and our administrator goals. And so the, and, and you'll see that when, when I bring my goals forward at the next meeting, that they all basically tie into this as well. So I, I feel like this year, we are all tied, finally. I mean, it's taken us years to get here, but I feel really good that we're all tied into this now.
Right. And, and just to speak to the work at the S3 Academy, for example, on Monday, because there are multiple stakeholders from each district, for example, they take the district leads away from the school building leaders. So Martina and I get taken away and we go work with our district level improvement plans, while then our building principals, our assistant principals, working on their individual school improvement plans, and then we come together. And so we bring that anchor, our anchoring district improvement plan, and then the schools are then able to take that and build their school improvement plans, their SEL plans from that. So it's very strategic in the way in which they, with, with the way in which they do it, and they work with us in completing the, the tasks at hand, so. Um, so I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to Martina and Laura. They're going to talk like they did the last time about each of the goals. Um, and I'll just draw, also draw your attention, um, after the social, emotional and academic learning goal, we then defined what that means, um, and will point out that, um, uh, how we define that in the core competencies that we're focused on within the district. So I'll hand it over to you ladies. Thank you.
Thank you so much again for the opportunity to present this district improvement plan. I also wanted to, um, echo something that Laura said a long time ago, but, um, that builds off of what we just heard, that, um, the district plan definitely drives the school plans, but they also reflect each other. And I think that's because, um, the principals are heavily involved in developing it so that we really see something that's really cohesive because it kind of goes both ways. And, and we're, um, trying to address everybody's needs with this plan, and so we're really proud of that situation. So, um, our plan is to go through each of the goals, um, with this group. Uh, and I just wanted to mention that the district improvement plan is, um, accessible on the district website. Uh, so if anybody wants to look at it in any more detail, uh, please feel free. Each of the goals has a number of components. Um, in addition to the goal, we've outlined actions, which are the specific steps to achieve the goal. We've outlined benchmarks, which we consider the measurables or the, um, early indicators of success with the goal. And then we've, um, developed outcomes, uh, which really help us tie each goal back to our stakeholders, our students, our staff and our community. Um, really, uh, intended to paint a bigger picture and, um, illustrate the why in terms of each goal and why are we doing this, so. Um, as we go through it, you'll see that each goal connects to the broader vision for instruction at Nishoba that was just mentioned. Um, to support students to be active participants in their learning by learning collaboratively, doing work that's meaningful, sparks creativity and innovation and leveraging technology in order to enhance, um, students' learning in all areas. Uh, in order to succeed in an environment that encourages students to learn from their mistakes and think flexibly and have an impact on those around them. We know that students need more than academic skills, and, um, as Superintendent Clenchey mentioned, we're really lucky to be kind of looking beyond that because we're striving for that excellence, that goals, gold. So, um, we hope you see that the goals in this dip represent our next steps, um, in helping students develop their skills academically and beyond. So with that said, the first goal is to intentionally integrate social, emotional practices across all settings. And we were very deliberate in calling this, um, bucket goal, social, emotional and academic, because we know how critical, um, social and emotional engagement is to students' outcomes, um, in academics as well. We also see, um, the skills in social and emotional domains as critical to students' success outside of school. So, um, we want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to support and foster those skills with our students. Over the past few years, we've done some work within our health curriculum to explicitly, um, incorporate the teaching of social, emotional skills. Thanks to the school committee's feedback, and as Dr. McGuire mentioned, we've listed those five skills on the next page. And, um, those include self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness and relationship skills. So our next step as a district is to ensure that now that students are learning those skills specifically, that they get many opportunities to practice them, further develop them and further learn them so that they really, um, can transfer those to any area in which they're working. And so, um, our plan is to, this year and next year, work with our staff to offer professional development through staff meetings, which, um, Laura will talk about in a little bit, um, and other professional development opportunities to define, to develop their own understanding of those social, emotional skills and then be able to be very planful in terms of all the opportunities they'll, they'll then integrate for students, um, in a future year to, uh, support those skills. And through our S3 work, we're also, um, planning to incorporate the consideration of social, emotional data and supports on top of academics within our, um, intervention planning, so.
Did you want to share, um?
I think we're...
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, kind of just, uh, interject for a minute. School committee members, uh, you're going to hear that CASL acronym come up over and over and over again. For, uh, Mike and Leah, as educators, current educators right now, you're probably hearing that a lot. I mean, I don't know if you're, uh, in, in the know about that, but i- if you aren't, take, please take extra special note of that acronym because it will come up consistently now throughout the rest of the year.
I just can give a highlight of what it's looking like at, in the, in the, in the schools, um, in terms of the leadership team aspect of the plan. So at the school level, we are using the knowledge and training that we've gained from Research for Better Teaching. Our leadership team went this summer and we're, we're going again in a couple of weeks. Um, and we experienced a, a mini-institute on SEL and, and anything that, that we take from RBT is awesome. Um, we're also using the learning that Dr. McGuire had described from the S3 Academy, and we're also looking forward to the Excel Academy as well, which is coming up. And so the principals are using that learning to impart knowledge to their staff and their respective buildings. We know this is a two-year plan, so this year our focus is on increasing awareness and understanding of staff so that their knowledge of SEL is strong. We know that we can't have strong SEL for our students if we don't have strong knowledge and awareness for the staff. So the principals are looking at really supporting staff with increasing their knowledge around those five core competencies this year. That's our, our collective goal. We're all approaching it a little bit differently, but we're all approaching it, um, consistently and strategically in a very similar fashion. There's a lot of overlap and a lot of communication and collaboration amongst the principals about how we're approaching, what we're sharing with staff and what we're expecting staff to do this year in terms of learning. So I can give you a snapshot of what it's looking like at Luther Burbank this year, and I know it looks very similar at the other schools as well. We have earmarked, if you will, our staff meeting time and our available site-based early release time, which we've already been fortunate to, to really have, um, one and a half days at the beginning of the school year. We had a site-based date last week. We've used that time and we've also projected out to use our staff meeting time for the remainder of the year to systematically, um, experience those five core competencies, competencies with staff. And staff have already been given an agenda for the year of what that's going to look like for the remainder of the year, and they're really excited. So at Burbank, we've already dug into one of the core competencies around self-awareness, and that's included different kinds of activities that we used with staff around relationship building with students, and they were really energized and excited, and, um, um, we've already seen application already. Even though that wasn't necessarily our intention this year, it's natural for teachers, um, to go ahead and take it back to their classrooms, so that's been exciting. And we're looking forward to the year ahead with the other four competencies and then summarizing at the end. And then in addition, we are also, um, engaging in a staff book study, and I know this is happening at the majority of schools in the district, using On Word by, um, Elena Aguilar. It's for these, um, emotional resilience for educators. And so that's already underway in our schools. And as well at Luther Burbank, we're also engaging in a parent-teacher book study on Middle School Matters by Phyllis Fagel. And we're really excited about that learning with our parents around, for us, SEL at the middle level for parents. We also have advisory programs which further support SEL learning for our students. And this year, we've actually gone in and revised our advisory program for two of the core competencies, um, social awareness and relationships. So there's a lot going on at the site-based level in each building. It's really exciting.
Can I just interject something too? This, uh, gets back to, uh, Dr. McCarthy's comment earlier. She, she, it was a question she asked about, um, do you get together? Do you have these kinds of discussions? Do you reflect? Do you? And, and one of the, I mean, I don't think you know this administrative team that well because you're so new to this, the, the committee, but that is how we work. And so, um, whether it's like a meeting like today where we had our, like, this whole room fills up with all of our administrators, and then after we have separate individual meetings, we always take the time to reflect and, and prepare notes and, um, and so that everybody's pretty much always on the same page. But we also work very hard to respect the autonomy of each of our three communities. And so it's okay for them to be a little bit different depending on their staff, depending on their communities. And so that's why, exactly as, as, uh, Principal Friend said, a lot of it's the same, but there are some, a little bit of differences. But those are purposeful, and, and we accept that and we respect that, so. Sorry, thanks.
I have a question.
Um, Leah?
May I? Uh, can we expect that this is also happening at the high school?
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Uh, again, very different, right? Because, uh, you know, what, what you're seeing right, like, all of, this is for the district, right? So, um, what you're seeing here is not labeled for elementary and middle schools. What you're hearing tonight, uh, because, uh, you know, um, Principal Friend is middle school, you're hearing more of that around the table tonight. But no, there's, there's work that's being done right across the entire district in this area. So that's a great question.
And we're particularly excited about the Excel network that we've got, we applied to and we're accepted to this year because it's a K to 12 effort. So there's at least one representative from each school, including the high school, which has two going, and that's going to really bring us together as a district in furthering SEL work.
And I just, I wanted to, just in terms of closing out this one around, um, how, how we move forward um, when it comes to district-wide professional development and the focus. And the focus this year very much still continues to be on innovation, but a move towards social, emotional learning. You know, last year we had George Karros come, and he was all about that innovator's mindset and what is the mindset of being innovative. Um, this year, I think, Elaine, you asked, you know, why Tony Wagner and what is the connection to, to social, emotional learning? But he, he understands that the skills of motivation, you know, that emotional intelligence pushes, pushes kids forward. And, you know, next year, as we really move into social, emotional learning, you know, we're looking to get somebody in here like Mark Brackett, who is the leader at Yale University, who, whose book just came out, Permission to Feel, which we're doing a, a team read on that. So it's been very deliberate to kind of move slowly from that kind of innovator's mindset through Tony Wagner, who will make the connection, and then next year, that implementation of social, emotional learning with kiddos, with the staff who knows how to do it.
So it's, but it's a very thoughtful process that we're taking here. Sorry, Martina?
That's okay. So, um, now moving to the second goal. Uh, the second goal is to create for staff and students inclusive learning structures and environments that promote collaboration, empowerment, innovation and other practices that will support our students to be successful in school and in life. And this again connects back to our instru-, our instructional vision, where students are given opportunities to prepare for their life in and outside of school by developing skills, including collaboration, flexible thinking and innovation. Um, because we know those school, those skills are, um, critical and will become more critical to their success, um, in, in the outside world, uh, world as well. This goal also connects to last year's second goal, um, which Dr. McGuire mentioned earlier, uh, was focused heavily on, um, creating safe and supportive learning environments. And we feel that this is the next step for us to build on additional structures that will promote that multi-dimensional learning now that we've kind of got, established this safe foundation. Um, we can look beyond that again. We're going for the, the excellence. So, um, we want to, uh, promote learning that extends beyond the discrete subject areas and allow students to learn across the content areas and skill sets. And in order to do that, we need our spaces and our structures and our schedules to model that, um, and allow for that. So, um, and within this goal, we'll be, uh, redesigning, evaluating and redesigning school spaces to foster innovative student learning. As an example, at Luther Burbank, but actually across, um, middle school libraries have been, um, already within the last, like, the summer and the last few weeks transformed to flexible learning spaces where, um, teachers can come together, students can come together from multiple classes and really leverage a flexible space to do work that moves beyond the typical classroom. So we're really excited about that. And secondarily, we'll, um, continue exploring the design thinking framework as another, um, framework for identifying, um, problems and identifying solutions to those problems. So, uh, we are seeing a lot of promise in that area at the high school and looking for...
I was just going to say, uh, there's a perfect example of the high school, uh, because we're doing work, we did some work with them, um, just going in in the summer, actually, we brought all the department chairs in and had them all trained on, um, the design thinking. And so you'll, you'll see more of that start to play out too. And we felt, I, uh, with, with them, that they weren't quite prepared yet to implement, which is exactly what we said. This is why we want this year to focus on staff, because we really want our staff to feel confident and comfortable in the, the, the subject matter before we have the expectations of rolling out the students. So, very purposeful. Sorry.
So, um, moving on to the third goal, uh, is to grow empowering student learning experiences for students and staff. This again expands the third goal from last year's dip, um, to help us address the updated history social studies framework. Um, this framework sets forth the expectation that students have foundational skills and resources to become civically engaged and learn about history and social studies from a more diverse set of perspectives and has been encouraged in the past. And within the next two years, our first steps in addressing these shifting expectations will be to realign the middle school curriculum um, because that's really experienced the most drastic changes in this round of updates to the frameworks. And we're also going to look to support students' civic, um, skills and, um, civic-mindedness uh, by identifying opportunities across content areas to, um, get students actively engaged in their school, actively engaged in their communities, and, um, make deliberate connections, um, between their social, emotional skill development and their, um, their academic skill development in this area too. So we're really excited that this is the next extension of our, our empowerment or student agency-focused goal in the district improvement plan. And I'll then move to goal four, which is to, did you want to add anything by the way?
I did a great job.
Okay. Uh, and then goal four is to develop aligned curriculum and instructional practices for literacy across the content areas. And again, as a, um, in an effort to kind of expand and enhance this, um, particular goal from, um, a literacy goal that we had in the past, we've expanded our definition of literacy to include digital literacy within this, uh, this particular goal. Uh, we'll be looking for opportunities to support students in developing digital literacy skills across the content areas in a similar fashion to the social, emotional skill development where they're not, it's not discreet. It's maybe discreetly learned, but then really these are skills that apply across content areas and that students really need to be fluent and fluid with, similar to the social, emotional skills that we talked about earlier. So the more opportunities we offer them to practice and demonstrate these skills, um, the better off we feel that they'll be for, um, academics and also their life outside of school. Um, and then in the area of reading and writing, we're really excited, um, to be embarking on a middle school, um, collaborative effort to incorporate literacy workshop within that. So we've, um, over the last, um, few years, focused heavily on the K to five, um, reading workshop and writing workshop implementation. Some similar, um, uh, work has happened at the high school where they've been working to incorporate choice reading and some of the... choice reading and some of the workshops there too. And we're just thrilled that this next step is to bring the middle school, all the middle schools together into this work so that we can really have a cohesive K to 12 model for literacy that each sequentially builds upon the skills and also the instructional models that students are experiencing. And we feel that the, that the work and growth we'll see from students as a result of that cohesion will be really promising. We're very excited about it. So just to close this out, we're really proud of this district improvement plan. As Superintendent Clutchy said, we, we really do feel it's the next step for us in helping us achieve or at least work toward our mission of educating all students to their fullest potential. We're really proud of the work that we've done and the collaboration that has gone into, to building this, including the collaboration with you all. We appreciate your feedback along the way. So thank you.
Lea?
So I have a question on goal three. I really commend this plan. It's amazing. I wonder on goal three, it says, teaching and learning will design and implement district-wide professional development and curriculum that promotes student-centered instruction. And so this year, am I right in understanding that this year you guys are building the capacity of the staff to understand what that means? And then in the following year, beyond that, you, you should be finding those things come through the classroom and students experiencing that K to 12.
That's true. And we do this specifically in district-wide curriculum development time. So we have a curriculum review cycle, which allows us to bring together teachers from specific content areas in very deliberate and facilitated curriculum development time where we really work to in even more depth, develop their capacity to kind of think through student-centered instruction and then build together as a district-wide team, opportunities for students to, to participate in that kind of work. So we definitely, this is a long-term goal for us that we began several years ago and will be continuing to do until its pervasiveness.
I think one of the things I would want to mention too, because you'd mentioned this earlier, and I know Mr. Grady had mentioned this today around our administrative table when we're wrapping up our meeting this morning. The intent, when we, when we worked on this, the intent was never that we would expect our teachers to implement all kinds of different things this year. Because we really were trying to make sure that our staff felt very comfortable with the material before. However, you had already alluded that you're seeing things already happening in Luther Burbank. And Mr. Grady gave the example around the administrative table this morning that they just did some very intensive work on their PD day the after, the other day. And already this morning, they were implementing things. So even though that wasn't our intent, we're seeing the teachers take it, take it and run with it right now. So that's very exciting. So it's kind of exceeding expectations right now that we had for, in the specific area, so.
I think a prime, a prime example of that too is with the new social studies standards at the middle school level. Our teachers are really working together in professional development so that then you will see the fruits of their labor play out in the classroom. You know, we've joined forces with Primary Source, which is a fantastic, probably as a classroom teacher. We've developed a regional partnership with them. So not, that regional partnership includes us teaming up with six other area districts to then collaborate district-wide and through other districts in the, in the area to do that. But that's huge because it's such a huge change. The teachers need the time, they need the PD to really wrap their heads around that. And then ultimately what that civics component is going to look like in the district, but also significantly ties to the social emotional piece when kids are civically engaged. So that's how we're trying to really provide for teachers in, in this first year.
And we know that's a hardship. So you know, I think we're trying to offer professional development wherever possible. Primary Source is coming in to work specifically with our sixth and seventh teachers across three days to model some of the student-centered work. And then with the expectation that they're also building into the units that then they're going to develop together. So it's really exciting. And the framework shifts beyond social studies, science, math, ELA. They've all kind of facilitated this, so we've wanted it. And then it's supported by the frameworks as well. So we're really happy that that's kind of.
And it's supported by this table. The resources that we have to be able to do these kinds of things is fantastic. And it's, it's a result of the collaboration and what you folks approve for our teachers and for our kiddos. Because I collaborate with other districts and they say, oh, you know, it's not something that we can do in our district. So, and I know our teachers know that because they all jump at the chance to be involved in PD when, when they can.
Yeah, I think it's so important for kids to be engaged in skill building. As much as content knowledge is interesting and important, skill building is what our students really need.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's because of that, those skills that help them generalize their learning to new experiences and new learning. It's not just about the content.
Other questions or comments?
Mike? This is obviously a really robust district improvement plan. I think it's ambitious, appropriately ambitious. I don't think overly ambitious. I think it's, it's great. And I know Brooke, you spoke to the fact that this is very much an anchoring document for the district and that once it's in place, then school improvement plans can be developed from it. And I'm actually wondering about that. So are the school improvement plans and the district improvement plans synchronized so that once the administration in schools get a sense of what the district improvement plan is, at the same time, a new school improvement, or multiple new school improvement plans are then expected to result from it?
So I'm going to let both Joel and Laura speak to that. Joel, if you don't mind pushing up to the table, please, thanks. But let me just tee that up first. So I think the key that we need to keep in the back of our mind is worth thinking about this is that they're involved heavily in this process in the building. So they know right from the beginning, because it's actually coming from them, what those priorities are. So you know, it's not a case of waiting until, you know, September 20, whatever, to say, oh, here it is now. They already know. And so the work has already started to be generated at that level, effective last year, as they were starting. So maybe Joel and Laura, if you can speak to this?
So as you know, and Dr. McCarthy knows, having, you know, worked at the school council level, you know, that work is pretty much an organic process from the ground up in terms of, you know, where we are headed as a school relative to where the district is headed. And so different schools are along different timelines in their school improvement plans. And yet I think, if you think back to our work together on the school council, we were talking about those ideas of, of academic rigor and social emotional and what that looks like at the school level. And, and you know, I value the partnership. Superintendent Clutchy uses the word collaboration. Really, I just listen a lot to what Laura Friend says. And, and I think it is a healthy discussion in terms of where we want to go as a district, understanding where we currently are as a school and, you know, what we do well and where we can be better.
So it seems like sometimes the school improvement plan actually leads the district improvement plan and sometimes vice versa?
Leads, I, I think, I, I think we have an idea of, you know, so we talk about the, the, the trajectory of these conversations. You know, where do we need to grow? And those conversations happen. Where do we need to help develop our teachers? And those conversations happen when goals are generated from there. Where do we need to have our students end up? And so over that continuum of time, you know, it's chicken or an egg kind of thing. Sometimes the school may say, yeah, this is the direction that we want to go, but we've probably had those conversations as a team first. But we also respect the fact that our school councils have an important role to play in terms of that development process. So it's hand and glove.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Laura, did you want to add anything?
I would just say, I think that's a really valid point. And it's, it's a point that we're aware of at the school level because while we have our own agendas and what's important to our community, which is really important to us, say in Lancaster or in Boston, what's most important is that we're supporting the district vision so that we can move collectively together as an entire unit, a team. So I think the chicken and the egg analogy is a really good one and one that we're always mindful of. And we also know we're part of a larger context. We're not silos. And so that, that conversation and that collaboration is, is happening continuously. No decisions are made in isolation. We're calling our colleagues, we're calling teaching and learning and saying, we're thinking about this. So we're all, you know, doing things a little bit differently, but we're all headed in the same direction. And we're committed to that.
You know, for example, the principals meet alone with teaching and learning once a month just for this kind of conversation. So you know, the conversations are organic in nature and I think are just, to your point, ongoing. We're always having this kind of rich conversation.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, based on what you, what you said, that speaks to the, both the transparency and the authenticity of what's developed in the DIP and the school improvement plans. And so, you know, like you said, hand and glove. And that's, it was, it was really a question that I didn't know the answer to, but it makes absolute sense. So thank you.
And Mary, may I?
I liked, Martina, you used the word, and just on this particular topic of being reflective, that the district improvement plan is reflective of the school improvement plans. And so, and from being, Mike and I, working, working with Joel on the school council, would see that too. And, and Joel would say, the district is going to do that too. So we might want to just go, you know, he was feeding those ideas too. We might just want to step back a little bit. But I just want to make some general comments about the district improvement plan and, and say what a privilege it is to be, to be working with all of you on this. Because when I think back to when I first, not first teaching, but when I was the Director of Character Education and Service Learning in Hudson Public Schools, which was like, you know, around 2000, 2001, and, and the whole district, we were all designated as schools, schools of character. So many districts were so focused on pure academics. And social and emotional learning was considered soft skills, you know. Well, that's really nice if you have time for it, but just make sure that we can do, you know, the English, the ELA, and the math. And so even social studies was being pushed a little bit away. Science stayed in there, but everything else wasn't. So to see a district improvement plan with such a strong emphasis on social emotional learning, when that was my work for a long time. And I have to say, the Hudson Public Schools and Dr. Sheldon Berman, Shelley, was way ahead of everybody else. And we did a lot of work in Hudson in regard to this. And I worked with Castle and, you know, we had a lot of grants, big grants. And so whether it was called character education or the other part of what I did, which was service learning. And, and that brings in social emotional learning with academics. And so you have practice and theory moving together. So that's another, you know, way that we can move. Once the teachers are really comfortable with social emotional learning and they know, because if you get ahead of what the teachers are comfortable with, just as you said, it's just not going to work. So it's just, I have to tell you, it's like, it's like being a grandmother, and I am a grandmother, to have been around in the days when this, a lot of this was really poo-pooed. And the research wasn't there, and now the research is there. But to see this and to think that this is what our district is moving, you know, is working on, it is robust, as you said. It is ambitious, but it's the right way to go. So it's, I really feel privileged and, you know, so proud of all of you.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much, Mary. Thank you.
So this lays out the, the broad goals and everyone who's working in their area. What would be wonderful is when you come back in the spring to give us a progress report, to have very specific examples of what it looks like. So if I went into a high school classroom, whether it be math or whatever subject, what would be different because of this? And to get a snapshot from each of the schools and representative of the different grade levels. So we can have a more, for me anyway, a, a more vivid picture of how this made a difference. What was, what are you doing differently than you, than perhaps you did a year ago? And what do you see the result is? Because that's part of it too. Not that everything is set in place in perpetuity, but on our journey, our year one, year two, wherever we are, this is where we are. This is what, this is, this is what we're doing and this is where we're going next year. So as part of the report out, and I'm sure we'll talk more about that as we get closer to that time. But I agree with, with, with Mary in terms of being back in the day, but you said it all. I'm not making it, but I agree. But also for me, seeing how these district improvement plans have, have evolved in the time I've been on the committee. And really, I haven't heard, and, and I know how hard the administrators are working, the teachers are, I have not heard any complaints about, we call it initiative fatigue. Oh, they got us doing this now, and now they're going to do that, ah. Nothing. There is so much positive energy and excitement. And it's just, it's, it's, it's the vision that we all had, those of us in education, for what we should be doing, not just the academics, but just incorporating the, the different skills so that you're not just learning stuff, you're, you're learning things that you can play off of. So thank you all for your hard work. And thank you for your leadership, Brooke and Todd, in bringing this forward.
I think too, what you'll see, and I want to be, I just want to put this out as a cautionary note again, is that remembering that this year is our year to focus on teachers, not implementing it into the classrooms. We're just seeing that through extension really, that that's, that's ongoing. But it won't surprise me if we don't see some presentations throughout the course of the year, just like we did last year, or you know what, with the, the literacy initiatives coming forward. I can see that happening this year too, where.
Well, you know, teachers are, you're teaching something, then that will go through in their classroom. You know, so it'd be fun to hear about it. But thank you so much.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
So the next item is the, I had spoken at the last meeting about doing something different with public comments. And one of our members made reference to a Superior Court decision in a case, Spalding v. Town of Native School Committee. And it is likely that this decision will have implications for public participation at school committee meetings, policies, and not just here, but across the state. And before we do anything differently with our practice, I feel it's prudent to consult our attorney and see what, how MASC is, is being advised through the legal team that they work with. Once we have recommendations from them, the policy subcommittee will work on a revision to the current policy, and then it will be brought forward to the school committee for approval. So we are not going to move forward with our pilot. And this is why, and I don't want to get into the particulars of this, but it is, you can find information about it and you can look up the case. You can get it out of the newspaper, you can go to the legal firm's website, but also get the, the case, et cetera, through the, the court system. So, okay. I'm set. So now we'll move to the, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut anybody off, but I don't want to belabor this either. Did anybody have any questions? So now we'll move to the business meeting.
We're going to talk money. So we're going to bring Pat Maroni up to talk about our year end. And, and I'm going to kind of help her out along the way, just because I won't be able to help myself. I like to do that. So she'll start and then, and then I'll fill in some, some thoughts along the way to kind of where we're at.
I'll do the treasurer's reports first.
Treasurer's report's always an easy one to do.
So I've, the treasurer has presented to me reports for the months of May, June, July, and August on the balances in our cash and investment accounts. As you can see, based on all four months, we have a pretty healthy balance in there. And we're doing pretty well. So I would say, anybody has any questions?
OPED's doing okay in our little trust. I wonder what they're investing in? I might want to know. Seriously. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It has gone up and down though. I want to point that out, our OPED, because we do keep pretty close eyes on that. And we have seen it go up and down.
July was 442. Yes, go ahead.
Was there a deposit into the OPED?
Yes, on July first, as a kind of deposit process.
Never mind.
I was gonna say, I think that's what.
Yeah.
That explains a lot.
Yeah, explains a lot. Does anybody else have any questions about anything that helped you? So next, I'm just going to briefly go over the results of operations. And I'll just give you a overview of where we landed in regards to expenditure year-end expenditure report.
There it is.
And mind you, this hasn't been audited yet, so this is basically before the auditors have a chance to look at it. So as you can see, we've ended the year with eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar balance. And you can see, based on the different departments and categories within our budget, what departments have surpluses, deficits. And as you can see, the insurance and benefits line is primarily the reason for why we have such a surplus in our budget for this year.
Sorry, can you say it one more time? I know that that was important. I just didn't catch it.
Well, the insurance and benefits line has a surplus, and there's a reason for that too. During our budget process, we don't always know where we're gonna land as far as our health insurance goes, because we don't have our new rates. So in at that point, at last year, we met with the unions and went over a change in the plans to make, to bring forth a more affordable plan. And in the past, what I've had is, a lot of people were jumping onto our plan, so I always planned for that. You know, I don't know whether things change in their families or whatever, but we had had a trend upward. And I had been successful in planning for that in the past. This year, we made some changes to the program that saved us some money. In addition to the health insurance and the dental insurance, we had some money that was basically because of rate changes. Also, we had some savings in the workers' comp, and then a couple of other areas of our insurances, we saved a little bit of money. So it was a good year as far as insurance and benefits goes.
Can I just go back for one? This is probably more to probably Kathy, and I'm not sure, Lainey and Mike, if you remember this, but we had problems with workers' comp a couple of years ago.
Yes, yeah.
You'll recall that. And so we've done a lot of work in that area, and I think that this year we felt the benefit of that. So I wanna be cautious when you take a look at that number, but I want you to know that part of that is because of the good work that's been done in our offices and HR.
Right, and Mya, who is our insurance carrier, they are also very instrumental in helping us to make sure that we're keeping up with all of those workers' comp-related issues, and making sure that the custodians and other workers in the district are in compliance.
Could you speak briefly to explain the other surpluses in special ed, the high school and center school?
Special ed, even though we had a significant increase in legal costs, and we had some additional transportation costs, we had some surplus in our out-of-district tuitions. And a lot of kids that came back into the district and are participating in our programs as opposed to paying a hefty tuition bill. So that would be the number one reason why we would have surplus and sped. The other one you said was what?
The high school and then center school.
High school, in the admin salary line?
Remember the admin salary, remember we changed?
That's right, okay.
And that's why you've got a big chunk of money there, was because that money was initially at the high school, but then we moved him over. You recall, we moved an administrator for Florence Sawyer?
Yes.
And so that's why you see a hole in one area and a surplus in the other, was because of that particular shift. So there's basically a whole admin salary in there, as well as other things, but. And I think for all the buildings too, you'll recall too, that, you know, with teachers shifting and whatnot, and hiring and everything, you're always gonna see those shifts. You're right. The other thing to keep in mind too, remember that, is this the first year, part of the second year, that we've left everything without transfers at the end?
Yes, this is, I think it's the second year.
This is the second year. You'll recall that that was based on the forensic auditor's advisement, right?
Yep, yep.
And so
So we see
So you've seen this all the way along.
The real picture.
You've seen the real picture. What she's showing you here is basically what you've seen every month as we've gone along. So there's really almost very little change on the one that you're seeing today versus the one that you probably saw the month, like in June, because we were already projecting, we knew where this was gonna be at. But I think it's really important, because you'll recall that previously, if all of those accounts were zeroed out, so you didn't know, right? What was overspent or underspent or whatever. And the problem with leaving it like this is you say, "Well, wait a minute, well, that doesn't make sense," whereas we're saying, "Yeah, but that's the reality of how our budgets work."
Right, but when you explain it, it's understandable.
Oh, exactly.
You need to know the context, so, and that's
No, I totally agree with you. I totally agree. I prefer this, even though there's a lot more explaining along the way, but it's so transparent, because you say
That's the name.
Yeah, it hasn't been zeroed out, it's exactly what it is.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. You partially answered that, but, and I understand that we've been seeing this tracking all the way, but forgive my memory loss on this, but you said that the change at the high school as compared to Florence Sawyer was because of, or in general, because of staffing changes.
Right.
So if you look at those two numbers, there's still, you know, around two hundred K difference, right? So Florence Sawyer was down forty, the Shoba High School is up to fifty. So where are the other staffing changes that?
Luther Burbank.
So, okay, so Luther Burbank is down, okay.
That trial, the trio of administrators moved around. That's what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Good pitch on that, yeah.
Luther Burbank, all right, we're getting much closer. Yeah, okay.
So when we get into budgeting season for this coming year, with the insurance and benefits, is this something that you need to keep the budget at, whatever it is plus some, for next year? Or do we think that we can lower the budgeted amount for insurance and benefits?
We should be able to lower it. Hopefully, I haven't spoken with the insurance people yet, it's really early.
It's really early.
They really couldn't give us any answers at this point. And all of our rates are based on our experience, which is, you know, how many sick people we have in the district, basically. I would expect it's going to be lower, which is good. So we'll see that continue on. But again, you know, it's all based on the rates.
Yeah, and I would point out too, it's, you're not suggesting this, and so I'm not trying to suggest anything other than the fact that we generally get an idea from them before we even go to the budget. See, like before we even bring it to you, like at that meeting in January. We've already talked to them, so we have a flavor of where we think that, so when we put the numbers in there, we're confident that it's pretty close, because it's kind of what they've told us. But we don't really know until actually, just about after you've accepted the budget, and then the numbers come in. So I mean, we go with basically what they tell us, what they think the flavor is, and because you don't, I mean, we could have as easily gone the other way on this. The other, you know, and not had, or lost a bunch of money, or, you know. The other thing I wanna point out, that I think is so important for you to remember on all of this, and I know I've said it before, but I wanna say it again. We had to borrow eight hundred thousand dollars last year from E and D. And I desperately need this eight hundred thousand dollars to go back into E and D so that I can withdraw it again for next, like this current year, because we've got seven hundred and fifty thousand ready to pull out of E and D to make this year's budget work. This, I don't wanna say it was planned, but we knew as we saw going throughout the course of the year that this is probably where we were gonna land, and we knew that we needed that money to go back into E and D. So this is not like, this particular set of funds is something that we can just do whatever with. And we can't, it has to go back in, because we need to re-borrow it this year. And you'll recall that that's past history, that we're trying desperately to get off that hamster wheel with, but we're just not there yet.
Other questions?
Okay, and so I'll move on to the revenue report too. That's also. This year, surprisingly enough, in June, it came to light that we
Late June.
Late June. We received some additional funds in regional transportation that were unexpected. And we also received some Medicaid revenue that was unanticipated. Well, it was anticipated, but not to the degree that it was. So, I mean, on this report, it looks like it's a negative, but in the accounting world, that's
A positive.
That's how it's presented. This particular report is generated right from our accounting system. So that two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty represents additional funds that we received for regional transportation. And then the Medicaid revenue, we received an additional hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. We were lucky enough to also receive some additional funding from Chapter Seventy, a little bit more than I had expected. Child of school revenue went up a little bit. Our earnings on investments were probably the best than they've been in quite a few years. Treasure has been very diligent in keeping the money in the places where it's making money. So that's a true reflection of her work in regards to that. So I'd like to bring up the PowerPoint presentation, and does anybody have any questions about any of these revenue numbers?
I just have a comment or two I wanna make. First of all, a hundred and twelve thousand in Medicaid, what's important to know is that's reimbursement money. Okay, so basically, money has been spent to bring that money back in. So I wanna point that out. And this was a very atypical year. We had some situations that demanded far greater expenses than we have had to put out certainly in my time here. And so what you're seeing there, it's an anomaly. It probably won't ever happen again, that you've got that kind of money that comes in on reimbursement. So that's not a norm at all. And the Chapter Seventy, I just wanna say, go back to the, again, our budget season versus, we go in with, remember, basically the house numbers, remember in January? But we don't know where it's gonna land, and we don't generally know where it's gonna land until July or August. Like once everybody's out of school, and, you know, conference committee comes back and says, "Okay, well, this is what you're gonna..." And so, again, that could as easily have gone the other way as opposed to the positive that it ended up. It was just a fluke of a year for us, to be honest with you.
Well, are you gonna now show us what we're gonna do with the
We're gonna talk about that, yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
We're gonna talk about that, and we're also gonna talk about a request I have in regards to middle school athletic revolving accounts. So this is how we landed for the end of fiscal year nineteen. We had a revenue surplus of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, and an expenditure surplus of eight hundred and nineteen, six hundred and fifty.
So those are the two sheets that we just looked at, right? So again, I just wanna say, so the operations, that's your budget. And then the revenue was like the extra over here that we weren't counting on.
So, and here they are in total, basically, one point four million.
But keep in mind, that eight hundred thousand needs to go back in so that we can take it out again this year.
So looking at that one point four, again, we wanna return to E and D the eight hundred thousand that we took out. So we would subtract eight hundred thousand from that one point four. And then the surplus of the regional transportation, the, there are regulations that'll allow us to put that into a transportation revolving account to cover any excess transportation costs that we may have in the following year.
This current year, right?
This year that we're in right now. And I put something up on the website too. There's a letter that's copyrighted off the state website that explains exactly what that is. And we voted this, you know, to do this a couple of years ago, so we're already clear in that respect.
So in essence, that three hundred, the two hundred and ninety-eight, nine, eight, zero that came in needs to stay in regional transportation. So that has to go back over to the revolving transportation account?
Yeah.
Because we may be at a loss next year, and we may need this money.
So that leaves us with an additional E and D of three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. And again, I said this isn't audited, so, but it will be around that number. So tonight, I guess we need to talk about next steps. What do we wanna do with that number? With that money that's left in?
And I think we've got, you know, a couple of options that we would wanna put on the table for you to consider tonight. I don't think we need to necessarily make a decision tonight, so I don't think we're feeling that. But I mean, there's a couple of things that we can look at, and I'm gonna suggest one or two, and then, you know, certainly you may well have some. I mean, there's gonna be some folks that say, "Well, should some of that go into OPEB?" Well, maybe some should, maybe none of it should, I don't know. You'll recall that OPEB is the other post-employment benefit for retirees, right? And so you'll recall that the school district basically has a liability of forty-plus million dollars in that area, and we've only got a couple hundred thousand dollars in the bank account.
Four hundred thousand dollars, come on.
Well, we do, but I mean, it's nowhere near the forty million. But I mean, at the other, on the other side of it, I know philosophically, I know we've had this discussion, we're probably never gonna see it in this lifetime. I mean, honestly, I don't know if we'll ever get to an OPEB number of forty million dollars sitting in a bank account somewhere for the Nishoba region district. So that's out there, and I'm not being negative at all, I'm just saying what's realistic here. So there's that piece. The other piece is, we've got this hamster wheel of borrowing from E and D every year to, you know, make the budget work, I mean, is, do we want a portion of that to go against that so that maybe we don't have to borrow every year the seven hundred and fifty thousand or the eight hundred thousand? Maybe this is here to say, "Well, maybe we take a little bit of that, so it's not always that high, and help us to get down to maybe where, someplace where it's only a hundred or two hundred thousand." That's an option. The other option is, where do we sit with free full-day K? Now, we've got three hundred thousand dollars, in essence, already earmarked for free full-day K. You know that we need between five and six hundred thousand for that gap year. And you'll recall that that gap year is the year where we don't get any money at all from parents or the state to help support that, which is why we have to have that money in the bank to be able to pay for staff, et cetera, et cetera. So we know, and we've been very open and honest and transparent about the need for that five to six hundred thousand dollar monetary earmark in some form or another in order to start free full-day K. Now, from my lens, I think we've already passed the philosophical discussion about that. So, you know, and I certainly wouldn't wanna speak for the committee, but I'll speak for myself. I feel that we're already past that point right now, so for me, it's a fiscal question now. Okay, so we've, I feel that we're, we wanna start this, I would like to see it started. When can we start it? And you'll recall that I said initially, you know what, I didn't think we could do it in the nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one year, could we do it in the twenty-one, twenty-two year? Then when this happened, you know, I said to Pat, "Do we look at the possibility of starting that one year sooner? Do we say, 'You know what, maybe we take part of this money and put it towards that free full-day K,' and we say, 'Can we start it in any year's time from now?'" Maybe we can. So I think that we've got a number of options from our perspective fiscally with regards to the free full-day K. Every year that we put it off, we lose money from the state, and it eats a bigger hole in our bank accounts as such, because we've never charged the cost that full, that kindergarten costs us. So we lose money in that program every single year, and we're not getting the appropriate state money in. So at some point in time, there's a fiscal question there that I know that the previous school committees had a conversation about, but this school committee hasn't. And so I think that that's something that we might wanna think about, you know. I'm not suggesting that we lean any way or another, and you may say, "Well, no." You know, the other thing is, we don't have in our E and D what the state thinks we should have in E and D, which is what, five percent, I think, of our
Five percent.
Five percent of our budget.
Well, five percent is our limitation.
Right, limitation. But we're nowhere near that in our E and D, and so maybe that money should just go towards that. I think this is a one-time shot deal, and I would encourage that you look at it from that lens. You know, like, what do we do with a one-time shot amount of money that we happen to have in front of us right now? So I just put those out as ideas that we've certainly had lots of discussion on. I just don't know where the committee members would fall right now in terms of their thinking. And again, we're just bringing this to you tonight, so we're not looking for any hard and fast decisions.
Does anybody wanna weigh in? Neil?
I wonder if you
I wonder if you would have the intention to bring to us some more detailed option chart, where you would say, this is how much we lose on kindergarten each year?
We've done that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already done that, we did that last year.
How much is the loss? In the red, as it were?
Ballpark. At one point, I think, four years ago, between pre-K and full-day K, it was about four hundred thousand dollars.
It was four hundred thousand, and?
And that's when we decided to raise tuition.
Right.
And it was very upsetting to people. But, a four hundred thousand dollar red entry in the ledger was very upsetting to me, because we were subsidizing something that should have been cost recovery.
Do we know what it is post tuition fund?
Do we know what, right, like?
Like what it is right now?
What the?
And without the pre-K?
Yeah.
Yeah, what the K is. What's our liability for K that the tuition doesn't cover?
Probably about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I was going to say, I think it's just under two hundred thousand, I think, would be my guess. But we can go back and take another look at it, but that's probably what we have to put in there.
It's still, we are, the tuition doesn't cover the cost.
Right.
Full-day K and other districts is cost recovery, ours is not.
Right. Right, it was, I believe that the number that I got from the state was about five hundred and twenty thousand, around there, and we were losing four hundred and ninety-five, so that little piece of money. And that, that will only grow.
Other thoughts?
Liam?
As teacher salaries increase.
Right.
I think what I would like to see is a big chart of, like, balances in the different accounts, so probably kindergarten, OPEB, I guess, E and D as well. And then, like, what we've budgeted the last couple of years, like, what we've been able to include in the budget, and then, what might be sitting in a stabilization fund or something else there. Just to know, like, where, what we've done recently, and what we think we can do on a regular basis moving forward.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm getting, I think I know what you're asking for, but I think we've got those, some of those numbers, like, at the tip of our tongue, I mean, really?
Yeah, I'm just, like, I'm kind of thinking, like, oh, right, OPEB, didn't we put, was it fifty in the budget, and then, we added a hundred thousand after? I'm just sort of trying to remember the details of what we've done.
There, I put up a sheet on our leave.
Yeah, I think we've got some here tonight, here by the.
Stabilization funds and what the balances are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what was in the, no, it's not in that document. What was in the attachment for the meeting tonight was a little confusing to me, because I was like, wait, I don't think that's what we voted, and there's some housekeeping or administrative details that were?
So, where in the, the meeting materials, Pat, would that be, or is it someplace else?
It's OPEB and stabilization funds report.
Okay.
It's, it looks like this, right?
So, right now, the balance in OPEB is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The, we have fifty thousand dollars in the high school turf and track stabilization fund. We have three hundred thousand dollars in the full-day K stabilization.
Well, earmarked for.
Earmarked for, yes.
Because you'll recall last, at the very end, this kind of gets back, I think, in length to what you were thinking, that a hundred thousand was asked for us to put it in the budget, you'll recall, at the very tail end of that budget process. You asked us to put the hundred thousand in. And so, that hundred thousand has been able to go straight, directly into the stabilization fund for the Free Full Day K.
Right.
All right, I don't know, maybe I read this wrong, because I definitely looked at this before the meeting, and was like, oh, no, this doesn't jive with my recollection of what we did. But now, I'm looking at it and saying, yeah, that's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
So, sorry, my mistake.
Leah?
I think I agree that this is probably a lengthy discussion. But just, just if you could indulge me for a moment, what, what is the expected cost of the, the turf?
Probably around the three hundred, a little over three hundred thousand mark.
So, that's my thought, so.
And I just want to say to you, this is a report as of the end of June. So, this doesn't even take into account what this fiscal year twenty, what we have allocated. And if you look below, it says, so whatever this number is in the box, add the next number now below it to it. So, we're, you know, four hundred and twenty-five thousand in OPEB.
Right.
We're a hundred thousand in the turf, and?
Yeah.
We're a hundred thousand in the, in the full-day K with?
The additional two hundred thousand that's been earmarked for.
Right, so, the first thing I thought of was, as a percentage, we are about thirty-three percent of the way towards funding what we expect the turf to cost, is that right? And then, we're about fifty percent towards full-day K.
Right.
And then, if we look at OPEB, with the additional one hundred thousand from FY twenty-one, we are just at one percent of our liability. And that seems very, very deep to me. And again, I, I understand, I have more things that I would say to this, to sort of highlight where I'm coming from, but those, those differences in numbers, to me, seem very, very stark and worrisome. So, I just thought that I would kind of add that perspective.
Okay.
Oh, I just had a quick question. So, if I understand the conversation correctly, I mean, the two areas that you're looking at for possible allocation of these funds would be either full-day kindergarten or E and D. And I'm curious, from the perspective of our semi-communities, if there's been any feedback in that regard, as to where our communities would like to see those funds allocated?
Well, I think every, every community would be different, to be honest with you. You know, I think that, and even within your communities, I think, within your communities would see it very differently. And I think that your younger parents, for example, would, would want that Free Full Day K. You know, if I was a betting woman, you know, whereas, you know, folks maybe, a little bit, maybe, that older, seasoned and understand, OPEB would say, hey, you should really be putting some more money into OPEB. I think it's really going to, I think it would, you'd find that it would vary greatly. So, which is why, I guess, I kind of look at it a little bit differently. But that's the strength about coming to this table, right? We're all going to see things differently. And so, we have to find where that, that balance is. But there's a piece of me that looks at the Free Full Day K and says, okay, when do we balance that piece out? And maximize getting the funds that I feel that we're owed from the state into the coffers, rather than the parents? You know, so, so that's more of a, I guess, maybe that's a philosophical question, as well as a management question, you know?
Mary? So, just to continue on that point, as we look at the, the three areas, and it wouldn't be great if we had enough money to put into each of them, but there's only one area that will actually give us revenue back. There's only one.
That's right.
And that's the full-day kindergarten. And I am very definitely, strongly in favor of doing this while we can, because we don't know what the future is going to be. There will be more costs. And, and I like what you said, Brooke, about the fact that the philosophical, the discussions about it really have, have landed on the fact that ninety-eight percent of public schools, you know, in Massachusetts have full-day free K, and that we know for students that to go full-day is so beneficial, it starts their whole education. And we know that our parents, and I have, all three from two, you know, from, maybe not all three towns, but two towns, of how important this is, especially to young families. So, this might be the only time to do this.
And that's right, and I were saying the same thing, yeah.
And money's going to come back. You know, when you're talking about return, you know, on, on the output of, we're going to get money back. And we're going to be then getting, you know, the Chapter Seventy money. Now, these kindergartners will be in full set. I mean, they equal a twelfth grader.
That's right.
We're going to get the money back. So, that's, that's what I think.
Leah?
McKee, the thing I keep thinking about the kindergarten fund is that we put this money into the savings account, and it's just sort of sitting there, waiting to be used for something very specific. Like, I guess you could consider the turf stabilization fund similarly. So, for right now, like, we took three hundred thousand dollars that we could have put somewhere else, and we're saying, okay, we're going to use this for kindergarten. So, it's just sitting there. So, the longer it takes us to finish that fund, and I totally understand why we need to be saving for it, but the longer it takes to finish it, the longer that money is not being put to use, to get the revenue back and also to educate the kids. Like, it's just kind of, to me, it feels like it's just sitting there in limbo, and that, you know, we're not using it in the regular budget, we're not using it in some other fund, like, it's just sitting there. So, I personally, I kind of feel like I just want to get it done. It's like paying off a credit card bill. Get it done, move on, and then, and then, like, start putting that, rolling that debt to something else moving forward.
Leah, did you agree with her comment?
Well, I would just echo what they were saying. I mean, spending it for the full-day kindergarten, even a parent, even a, a parent in any one of our towns that doesn't, isn't going to benefit from this personally, can recognize that we're going to save a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's just an estimate.
Estimated.
I'll crunch some numbers and give you some numbers.
Even if we only saved a hundred thousand dollars, that's a good return on your investment. You're not going to get thirty-three percent on money anywhere, so.
And I think to Pat's point, too, and she was saying, this kind of ties in with what Elaine's thinking, too, the, the longer we set an, the more expensive it will become, which is, as you recall, like, that's why we said, we know that we're going to need between five and six hundred. And DESE said to us, yeah, the longer it plays out, the more expensive it's going to be. So, we knew that if we went beyond the timeframe that we had suggested of that six hundred thousand, it may be more in a couple of years. So, it's, in some ways, it feels like short-term pain for gain. You know, I, I know that not everybody, Joe goes back to your point, I know that not everybody is going to feel the same way about this. And I'm sure that there'll be other people that say, well, why didn't you put that all into E and D, or all into OPEB, or all? But I agree with Mary, because I, there's a part of me that says, there's instant return on this, like, they're really, like, in terms of children resource, in terms of children's education, in terms of money coming in from the state, in terms of, you know, like, it would clean up now that three hundred thousand that's sitting there. And, you know, the benefit, though, I would look at this, I mean, if we, if, if this is the road that you go down, I'm incredibly grateful that we did what we did with that three hundred thousand, so that, or we wouldn't be in the position we're sitting in tonight to consider this. So, that three hundred thousand is really what puts us in the position to say, we can consider doing this.
So, I, I understand the, the OPEB liability, but I also don't imagine, as Brooke said, in our lifetime, or in any lifetime, a school district, a public school district, getting to that magic number. Now, I think we made a good faith effort, and we have. I mean, four years ago, our OPEB balance was zero. And then, we put it in a trust, so we've acted responsibly. And I think that that's sort of, from my point of view, the theme of, of the work of administration is fiscal responsibility. We engaged MasBo, the Massachusetts School Business Officers.
Officers, yep.
And we had a forensic audit, we've, we've become very efficient and responsible, because there was a feeling years ago, that we should just plop that five, six thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars into the budget, hardwire it in, go for it. But no, we knew the towns, because once it's in there, it's in, and you can't pull it out. So, we're halfway there. And I'm thinking in terms of, well, the money for sure. It bothers me to subsidize, give, have a benefit for some families that, that doesn't exist for other families by subsidizing. And we have brought the subsidy down, but it's still a lot of money. And there is such a feeling, I mean, there's, was support among the committee for the last few years, and we've certainly heard from parents in the community, that this is something that, that they have wanted. It would enhance an educational program in the school. I know that most kids do it, but for those parents that don't, and costs may be prohibitive, we're improving education and programming in this district by implementing it. And I, when we, we made this decision two or three years ago, to start chipping away at it, we deliberately did not say, oh, in two years, in three years, I mean, somebody was saying five years. But if we can do this, and I, we don't have to decide tonight, but if we can do this, there'll still be some money left over to put wherever we want it. But I, I think that this is an opportunity, and we could take advantage of it, and hopefully have full-day K next year. Get that period of time we have to pay over it. But Mary has, you know, listed all the salient points in terms of, of payment, and then, what it, you're, it's, you're really not, in my mind, you're not spending it, you're investing it, because you're going to get a return, and it'll keep on returning. So, Leah?
Logistically, you think that if we were to go down this road, you could get the programming up and running?
Oh, yes. In fact, we had the discussion today earlier with our, with our administrative team, because I, you'll recall that one of the things that we took a look at, and again, I felt bad, because I feel like I'm, you're operating from a deficit, and I apologize for this. If you don't understand something, please ask me, because it means that I just think that you know when you don't know. So, just please ask me the questions. We've, we laid out numbers last year that showed all of our populations, our student populations, and we did comparisons on trends. And so, to look at patterns, because one of our concerns, I thought, this is going back two years ago, when we started really talking about this, is, well, if we do this, so, for example, if we do this next year, will we suddenly have, I don't know, forty new kids come into every program, and we have to, you know, build classrooms and add teachers and this kind of thing? And what we saw, Leah, over the, and I don't even know if we can even find that number, that sheet, there was a matrix that we made up, is, you take a look across on a diagonal going from K to one, sometimes it was minus one, sometimes it was plus one, sometimes it was plus three or four. And so, we had a discussion again around the table today, except for those odd years where all of a sudden, you just get a real, you know, bunch of students come in at that particular grade level. As a rule, that doesn't happen very often, might happen every seven years or something like that. But, you know, we said again around the table this morning, it might be three or four kids, and that's all it is.
But not another teacher, or?
No, it's not. And so, we just, we feel strongly right now that we can do this, and we're ready for it. We feel that, as a district, we're ready for it.
Can I?
Great question.
Without objective, objective move the agenda, because I think everybody's had a chance. We're not deciding tonight, but I've heard members of the committee ask for some tables, some data, so that we can look at the various options that we have. And so, we can schedule that for an upcoming.
We'll pull some, we'll pull some different things together, just sort of FYIs type things. And I think, too, we'll put those numbers up again, Leah, so that you can, you can see what we were looking at last year.
Okay.
Is this a question?
Yes. So, when might we?
I would, I would like to bring this forward again next, next meeting, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, we'll put, we'll.
Put that on the agenda.
I can see that these are already added to the agenda.
All right, because we have, we have a, we have a few more, we have a few more items yet to be?
We have one more.
On that, all right, and then we?
Not on this, I'm done with the finance.
Okay, we have committee reports, go ahead. But so, the next thing is?
The Athletic Director has requested that the three middle school athletic user fee accounts be combined into one middle school user fee revolving account. And what are they used for? The middle school athletic activities, such as basketball, baseball, softball, track, and cross-country. That's what the funds are used for. And they're funded by a fifty-five-dollar participant fee per sport. And it covers all the costs of officials, uniforms, supplies, equipment, and transportation.
Wait, Pat, second. Excuse me.
And the advantages of moving them into one, it simplifies the budget process as far as transparency. It streamlines payment processes, so we don't have to split them up between each school account. It's, the Athletic Director spends a lot of time doing that, she could be doing some other things. And aligns offerings between the three middle schools, and it increases participation. And increased participation, I think, is important, because our middle schools are the feeders of our high school athletic programs. And to make, to have good, strong programs that are equal across our three towns, I think is really important. I'm not saying that they're not equal right now, but over the past, how many years, ten, fifteen years, there are irregular balances in each of the three accounts, because money was spent out of one and not out of the other, or whatever. So, this is just an effort, just put it into one, and then, spend it accordingly. I mean, for the most part, all of the programs offered are equal. There are, not every community has all the same, because some sports don't take off as well in one community as they might in another, but they're all offered. But they're all offered, and I, I just think it's a better way, and it aids to the transparency of the athletic budget.
Mike?
I'm almost certain of the answer, I just wanted to make sure. Because coming into this, coming into this, I looked at this and it was all part of the same slideshow. So I was under the impression that the proposal to combine these three was a, an alternative avenue to put those excess funds. This is not what you're getting at.
It's got nothing to do with them.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with that.
Just confused, because it was all part of the same slideshow. It said next steps, and then the next slide was like, let's combine all these funds, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments for Pat, Leah?
So I understand that the, I under, the advantages of simplifying the budget process and streamlining payment processes makes sense. To me, why would an accounting change increase participation?
Well, it's not increasing participation, I think it can increase the offerings. Some... Help me out, Brooke here.
Yeah.
How do I put this?
Yeah, it's, it, I think you almost really need Tonya here, to be honest, like, that's why I'm sitting here thinking, you know, she's, she wasn't able to be here tonight. But I think, I think she could explain why she sees that as a potential for...
Could we have her here at the next meeting and vote at that point?
That would be helpful. And I think she could probably better answer that. It's a great question, and I think that she has a, a way that she was thinking about that, that she could far better articulate than either Pat or I. So why don't we hold this till, and next, our next meeting?
And if she can't be here on the 9th, see if she can be here on the 23rd?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll work with her schedule. She's, she's a busy girl.
There she is. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, moving on to the subcommittee reports. What are those children doing up so late?
I hope they have bug spray.
I hope they have bug spray, yes.
I was just thinking how much I appreciate hearing the laughter.
We have no report from budget war, personnel, Mike?
Personnel met last week for the second time in, in September. Superintendent Clenchey offered the committee a revision of her goals, and we plan on meeting a final time on, I believe, October 2nd, where presumably we'll be ready to make a recommendation on this.
Very good, thank you. Leah, policy?
The policy subcommittee met today, and we are continuing that ongoing process of making the Nishoba Public Schools policies in line with and similar to other districts, according to Master Malon and others, other restrictions and requirements. So we hope to be bringing to you the final policies over the course of the next five meetings. We'll get those to you all in advance, so you can review the changes, and then bring questions to us. And if there are no questions, we can just approve them in form.
Yes.
I think that's about it?
Yeah, our ultimate goal is to have them be part of the MASC online policy manual thing. And this has been a goal for four years.
Yes, yeah.
It'll just, anyone who's gone to look for a policy on our website has been frustrated, to say the least, and, and this will help. So that's our ultimate goal. We're looking at being able to turn the, our policy manual over to MASC by the first of the year. Dorothy Presser informs me it'll take about two months to, to get them onto the system. And they have a person whose job it is to read through every single one that comes from us, to make sure that they're accurate and that they're grammatically correct, and that the, everything, punctuation, grammar, so Mary, you won't have to do it.
I can't help it.
I know, I told you, but you... So, okay, thank you, thank you, Leah.
Okay, consent agenda. Do you want to make a, a motion?
Sure.
About the consent agenda?
I will move to approve the September 25th, 2019 consent agenda, including the meeting minutes of September 9th, 2019, and the warrants of September 27th, 2019.
Can I have a second?
Second?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Meeting of September 9th or September 11th?
Oh, that would be September 11th.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so we have a second? All those in favor? Post, okay. So items to be considered for next or future agendas. I think we hop to planning calendar. So our parking lot is the regional agreement and school community membership, school start times, special education update. The calendar committee is going to be convening in December, is that correct?
And we told folks, because of the change to the professional development days, that we would evaluate how that has gone over, and so that has got to be, I don't know how, what's...
I was gonna say, it's gonna, you're gonna have to really think about that, because I think we will only have had one, two professional development days by the December timeframe when they start to look at it.
It's, well, it was something the community was told that they asked for, so...
Oh, no, and you heard, you heard Todd say tonight that they were collecting data, but I just want to...
We're definitely collecting data, it's the data. It will just be two, they will just have been two.
Okay, all right, but I just, I don't want that to get lost. The MCAS presentation, has that been scheduled?
Do we generally do that, I believe November, I think, is when we generally do that, is that right, Todd?
Yeah, we just have the one meeting in November, where we could do it...
Can you do it sooner?
Well, I'm just looking at November right now.
November, we only have one meeting, so...
Right, I'm just looking at one item there, but we could do it on that one meeting in November?
Sure. Then, the next meeting is October 9th. Steve and Mike will not be with us for that meeting. And the, Mike is on the personnel subcommittee with Elaine. And do you, are you, should we bring forward, if we, if PSC has the recommendation to approve the plan? Do you just want to...
I don't see why not, I mean...
I just want to check.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. I just wanted to double check on that, any other things for future, Leah?
I wondered if I could just ask, around the special education update, would it be possible to, I had some constituents request or inquire around program descriptions?
That'll be part of it.
They will have that?
Yes.
Do you know what I mean? The, all of the substantially separate programs and...
Yes, that's part of the...
That's, but she generally brings that forward, she's, she's got brochures for most of them, it's obvious.
Oh, she already does?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I was under the impression they didn't exist.
No, I believe that, I believe that that was done last year.
Okay, and could we also, when, when that comes forward, could we also, you guys are probably going to do this, but make sure that there is kind of measurable or like explanations as to how the objectives were met?
Yes, that's the, the update based on last year, we got some feedback. And I've had a conversation with Brooke and with Joan, in talking about how the programs are evaluated, if you will, as part of the, of the update.
I see.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, other things for the agenda?
Check all the books, everything on my list.
Everything, all right, and that's, we're good, okay.
Just don't forget to sign the warrants.
Okay.
Any, anything else for future agendas? Okay, and for the next agenda, October 9th, the goals, we have the guidance update.
And we have items from tonight.
Items from tonight.
Right.
Okay. All right, so can we have a motion to adjourn? So moved, thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, Leah, all in favor? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. Thanks for the talk, for the conversation and discussion. Appreciate that.